Thank you. Will you please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Sue Flynn will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks Sue. The next item on our agenda is a new partnership recognition with Orange Elementary, and I would ask that Crystal Buzza come forward, and I believe Principal Trask is here.
All right. Good evening. Thank you so much Board of Education for giving us a little bit of time. This is always one of the fun things that we get to do is just to recognize all of our great community partners. And as you know, we have a number of different organizations. They might be businesses or they might be non-for-profit. This happens to be a church tonight that's going to be joining Orange Elementary. And a lot of times, specifically with this church with Kimball Avenue United Methodist, they kind of started with some of their parishioners volunteering at the school, and so it just made sense. And so I'm going to have Principal Trask go ahead and introduce who's here tonight, and then they'll say a few words about, you know, why they decided to want to join.
Thank you very much. Just like Crystal said, this was really a natural evolution for us. Sometimes, you know, partners are not sure what they're getting into. Well, these guys are, they're into it. They started out in the fall, and it's been a win-win from the start, not just with students but with staff, providing support for both. And Reading Buddies has been a big hit, but they've also provided scarves and mittens. We have, I think, 250 or 275 cookies coming for our Leadership Day, shaped like a lighthouse, mind you. So make sure you, make sure you come check that out. That's right, right here, right here he is. And very exciting for us this week is they provided a book for every single child, and the child was able to choose the book. So those will be handed out this week, and we're really looking forward to that. So we really feel like this has been a partnership for a long time, but we're finally getting to make it official. And we couldn't be more thrilled or feel more honored to have them on our official Partners in Education team. So I would ask that, come forward. There we go, there we go. And I would ask that they come forward. This says Certificate of Recognition Presented to Kimball Avenue United Methodist Church as a new partner in education with Orange Elementary School. And I know that you are accepting this on behalf of Pastor Carn, but if you could say a few words about, introduce who you are and, and your connection, and a few words about your connection to Orange. Which, Mike, I know for you that, it runs deep. There you go.
I'm, I'm Sue Sperry, and this year I've been a partner in education, I mean, a, a reading buddy. So I've had a lot of fun with that.
I guess I gotta say something. I'm Mike Kinning, and Orange is, is real close to where we live, about four houses away. And we really enjoy having Orange Elementary as part of our community out there in the neighborhood. And it's provided the, the neighborhood with a lot of new opportunities using the playground, the facilities for walking group, and many other types of activities. So this is our opportunity to give back a little bit through Partners in Ed.
And you've got a great T-shirt on tonight. That Lighthouse shirt is awesome.
OPA.
OPA, that's great. Thank you all very much. I speak for the, for the board when I say that we really appreciate our Partners in Education. Thank you, thank you for all you do, for the books, for the support, for being Reading Buddies. We couldn't do it without you. It's a great community effort. We appreciate it.
Keep up the good work, Mike.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And this is the opportunity for those of you who wish to address the school board to do so. I ask that you please keep, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. And at that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. And also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. And finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it's generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially for items that are not on our agenda. But we will certainly try to help with information either before or after the meeting, but we do need to proceed with our agenda items. So with that, I would ask anyone here this evening who would like to address the board to come forward and state your name and address. And you have three minutes. Real happy I read that. Sorry, guys. We had an audience tonight, so I thought there must be somebody. Great.
Don't be nervous.
Don't be nervous. You're fine. Hey, I mess up every single meeting.
If I start crying, it's not because I'm afraid.
That's okay. Will you put the button on right in front of you? There should be a little green light that comes on. And tell us your name and your address.
My name is, I'm too tall for this. Hold on.
You're all right.
Okay. My name's Anissa Sanders. My address is 1126 Lock. I go to West High School. And my issue I'm trying to address is bringing back sewing to West High School. My argument is it's a good skill to at least know how to sew a button on. I'm not saying to be, can you hear me? Okay. I'm not saying we have to be bachelors or anything. I'm just saying it's good skills to know. I'm, they've heard rumors that they're taking away out of motives from us, and they've already taken away one day.
You're fine. You're doing great.
I started a petition to try and bring them back. I don't know if you have any interests in looking at it or not.
Sure.
Do why? I got students to sign it, staff to sign it, and future parents of future students that will be attending West to sign it. Because I find it's a very important matter that we at least know how to sew on a button, if nothing else. You, it's... It's important that we at least can get... I'm sorry.
You're fine.
They're not just sewing, but like anything, it's good to know at least have your head on your shoulders. It's good for, if you're going into retail, to at least know what you're doing. What I want to do is have a career in fashion design. And what... If the school offered help with that, like sewing and such like that. I know how to sew. I'm not the best, but I feel if our school could help kids that have desires to get someplace, the school could help with that.
Anessa, can I ask that you go ahead and wrap up your comments?
In conclusion, I'd like you two at least think about what I said. Not necessarily if I see it at West High, I just want it seen at West High. Thank you.
Thank you.
What year are you?
Huh?
What grade are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
Are you okay if we keep this petition, or do you want a copy of it? Are you okay? I hate, this is a lot of work that you put into it. We can make a copy for you? Okay. I thought you might want to make sure that, thank you.
Alyssa, I want to say thank you, sweetheart, and I want to commend you for coming up, talking in front of a panel. Because let me tell you, have you all ever been on an interview and you didn't know, and there was a panel of people? You think maybe you're going to be interviewed by one or two?
It is.
So this is a great opportunity for you to present yourself in this format. So, so please be proud of yourself. Also, let me ask you, and let me just say, I totally agree with you about the whole button thing. And in addition to some other things, are you involved in any after-school programs, extracurricular activities? Well, yeah, because have you thought about maybe starting up a sewing club or something that could? Here, let's have you step in front of the mics, sweetheart.
I spoke to the home ec teacher about it, and she said she tried talking about it. And then she said, "There's no room in the budget," or "There's no room for anybody." She said she'd be willing to stay after school and start a club, but there's no room for it or desire. I think it's mainly desire. There's not enough people that care enough about it, so...
Well, let me just say thank you again. And I would say about 30 years ago, I was president of our Future Homemakers of America Club in high school. Don't, don't joke with me, Angie. So thank you, Alyssa, for your input.
And Ms. Arndorfer went to make a copy of that, and so she'll be right back with that for you, okay?
So by the time, before you leave tonight, she'll bring your original back?
Yep.
She'll bring it to you in the, in the audience, all right?
Good job. You did it. Like I said, I make a mistake every time I open my mouth, so you're, you're doing great, so... Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Great, then we'll move on with our agenda. Before we get into our consent agenda this evening, I do need to make an announcement that we have one update to the agenda this evening. We are removing item G. Item G, which is on page 29, from our agenda this evening. It may be back before you at another time, but for this evening's purposes, it will not be on our agenda. So with that, we'll move on then to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of three items: the minutes of the April 6, 2016 Special Board Meeting, and the April 11, 2016 Regular Board Meeting, personnel adjustments and appointments, and bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings. So those are items B, C, and D. Is there, are there any items that any board member would wish to have removed? Item C? Great. Anything else? Then, to get the motion on the table to approve the consent agenda, items B and D? And a second? Great. Then all those in favor of approving those two items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Then that takes us to item C on page seven. And a second?
Second.
Great.
I see we have four resignations on the agenda. Just wondering how we're coming in terms of balance of what we, you know, the funding we have for next year's staff. Deadline for temporary layoffs or layoffs, I think, is fast approaching, so just wanted an update on that situation.
Perfect. This time of year is always pretty crazy in HR as we are analyzing our projected enrollment and making determinations in terms of staffing allocations for the next year. In light of our budget concerns and issues, we have worked under a lot more stringent parameters in terms of our budget, of our staffing. I'm happy to say that although a number of teachers will be issued an involuntary transfer to a position that they are qualified to, to serve in, no teachers will be issued a pink slip. And that was not the case a couple weeks ago. I, I want to publicly thank the WEA leadership because they communicated with the members that if there are individuals who are planning on leaving the district, they ask that they go ahead and turn, turn in their resignations earlier than they normally would so we would not have to disrupt our staff, and we have accomplished that. So thank you Rebecca, and please thank everyone who was involved in that.
Anything further?
Nope.
I guess I wonder too, what is our total retirement numbers looking like?
I think we're under 10.
Yeah.
We're under 10 teachers. And you know, this, this first wave of staffing is only for the certified staff. We don't, won't, won't do the classified staff until, until the end of the school year. But it, right now, there are under 10 certified teachers who are, who have submitted a retirement request.
And I would just add this too, just so we make sure, the retirement and resignation, obviously, you know, for viewers, making sure that they know that that is two different things. So resignations, we have, we do have more than the eight of resignations. But one thing that we did this year, which was helpful, is we really enlisted a communication technique to talk with the principals, and they were keeping lines open with their, with their staff. And so we actually had a, a document that we just kind of keep track on. So if a, if a teacher says, "Hey, you know, my husband might be transferred," or "My wife might be transferred," we kind of kept, kept tabs and wrote it down and tried to talk with them and just keep a really good tab on, on that. It has immensely helped with staffing to keep really, really good, good track of that. So I'm not exactly sure where we are on numbers. I'm trying to picture the, the Google Doc just to make sure that I know. But it's, it's probably, would it be 20?
Not quite.
15?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're about in there, and, and half of those at least are, are retirees.
Matt would be very proud of us because we have enlisted Google. So we, we've got a document that we shared in Google Sheets, and so, and we've encouraged administrators as they hear something, even if they think that a person is leaving, they document that so we can watch that daily. And as they receive a resignation, we indicate that there, so...
And in a year of, in a year of budget cuts, this is not the first, first time that I've said that we are cutting money this year and so, cutting budget this year. So it has really been helpful in the systems planning, because if you know somebody might leave, we're, we're making much better decisions as far as that. So it's, it's really been a good, a pretty smooth year despite the fact that we are, we are cutting significant dollars.
Well, it's great news that no pink slips. That's great. Is there anything further then? Then all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item E on page 18. It's online course application, adoption, excuse me. And the recommendation is the Board of Education approve the adoption of Edge Annuity online courses in the amount of $252,000 for a three-year contract period. So moved, Mike, and second, my Sue. Thank you. And discussion, I believe that Dr. Debbie Lee is here this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a, a pleasure to be here on a pleasurable evening. It's gorgeous outside. So I am not here alone. I have with me, I've asked Corey Kelchon to come. If he could... Corey, I would love if you would just come up here with me. And I also have Sam Rogers and Rachel Woodley in the audience too. Corey works with our online programming, and most of this work is a result of his efforts. We would have discussion. I'd say, "Can you do this?" Or, "What do you think about that?" Or he'd send something to me. And the whole process of what we were able to accomplish around the online courses and the new contract was all based on teacher decision-making, teacher discussions, surveys, pilots, and Corey led that. So I'm really excited about that, and it's kind of fun for me to be able to come up here and having an oversight of something, but, but watching it move and grow and not being intimately involved with it myself. So that was really kind of a fun process for me. But I do want you to know that the teachers can answer any questions that you have, or Corey can answer any questions about the process that we used. Just to highlight this, we knew that Plato was coming up. Plato is now Edmentum.
Right?
Okay, so they, they, those companies, darn it, changed their names, and then you have to kind of rethink it through. So, and, and so we said, "Okay, if the, if the contract is up, what else is out there?" We know that in the last five, six, eight years, there has been huge development in regard to online course development. And that's very, very important for us then, not to just accept what we have, but to do a review. What can we do? Can we do something better for our students? Is there something out there that will actually offer a better educational service or program to our students and for our students? So we looked at that, and we looked at a couple. And Edge Annuity and E2020 really came up on top. So we asked to start digging into that. We did a pilot of those courses. A small number of teachers piloted that. We had a survey from the teachers and from the students, a very small number, but still we got input from, at that point. We had further discussions. We met with the representatives from Edge Annuity and Edmentum. And then the teachers worked, really took a really good look at E2020. They'd been working with Plato for a long time, so they knew it really well. And then we asked the teachers to have a big discussion, and we asked them to vote. So it came out overwhelmingly, and consensus was to move to E2020 or Edge Annuity. So then we looked at what could we get in terms of the best deal possible. And so we were able to, between Plato and, or Edmentum and Edge Annuity, we actually were able to save $53,000 by going with this. Now, that's a really good, really good amount of money to save, but even far more valuable is the fact that the teachers and the students believe this is a far better project, or a product for our students. So it engages our students, it's more rigorous. It might take them a little bit more time to get through that, but we just really feel overall, this is a far superior product, and we got it less money, and the teachers are very excited about, about using this. We have PD that we will be providing for our teachers so they know how to use it. Also, the teachers who were involved in the pilot will be able to act as mentors to the teachers bringing them in, so we have that. We also have Corey here, who has great knowledge about it. Also, we want to continue to look at iWellLearning Online, which is a free product for us, but it has limited timeframes that we can get our students involved in, where we can start students at any point during a semester or year, engaging them in any of our E2020 courses. And so there are some limitations to iWellLearning Online, but we want to continue to explore it to see how we might be able to make better use of that as well. So, I guess the only other thing I wanted to bring up was that you need probably to understand that we don't do just online assignments or these classes, that we use a blended approach. What that means is the students use basically the online courses, but there are additional offline assignments and projects that are added to that to make sure that we fulfill our standards and our curriculum in our district. There will be some alignment that we will be working on over the next year or two to make sure that we are all in line. But anymore, most of the product coming out in regard to curriculum is aligned with the Common Core standards. So we should be pretty safe in that. But there's always a little bit of work to align it with what our district curriculum is. But if you have questions, I can ask the teachers to come up and, or Corey can answer.
I'd love to hear, Dr. Lee, I'd love to hear from Corey, and thank you for all the efforts that you put in. But will you tell us a little bit about this and?
Um, yeah, we, I actually looked at E2020 about three years ago for the first time. We ran a very small pilot just at Expo, and the kids didn't like it at that time because E2020, their teacher videos that are actually on the screen, which is different than Plato. And some of the videos at that time were 20 to 25 minutes long. So students said, "I came out of the classroom because I didn't want to see that teacher lecture for that long." And we gave that feedback back to E2020, and they completely revamped and changed it, you know, within two or three years, which I thought was awesome. They chunked everything. They don't have any videos over five minutes now. Students really seemed to like that. One thing I really took from the student survey was, most of the students that chose E2020 made a comment that they learned a lot more doing E2020. And the few that chose Plato said, "You know, I couldn't get through the classes faster. It was, it was a little harder than E2020," which I think was a pretty powerful thing coming from our students. So I think E2020 is going to be a lot better for our students, and it's a lot easier for our staff.
One of the things I didn't, didn't like about Plato was it didn't seem like it was very easy. After, after you took the test and you got 80% or whatever, or 90%, it wasn't inherent in the process of very easy to go back and review and understand.
Yep. That was, that was a big selling point too. With E2020, the teachers and students actually get that feedback of, "What was the question? What did you answer? Was the right answer?"
Okay.
So with Plato, our teachers couldn't even get in and see what questions the students missed. With E2020, they can get that feedback.
I think that's a huge improvement because that's the opportune time, you know, "Why did I miss it?"
Yep.
"Which ones did I miss? Why did I miss it?"
You can go back and learn.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, no, it's true.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question as far as the, the cost, okay? In, in, is saying total cost over three years, including my path at all sites? Or total cost over three years, including my path only at Expo? How did you decide only to have it at Expo?
So my path is a diagnostic assessment. Plato had something similar. We didn't use it a lot. We use it a lot with our struggling learners and maybe some special education students. With the cost, I actually talked to Garrick with E2020, and he kind of okayed us for the, for us to purchase at Expo, but we can still use it for students at East and West if we feel it's going to benefit them. So it's not, that's not going to be available to East and West. We just wouldn't purchase that license for all three buildings. Instead, we can purchase it for one and use it for all of our students.
So would they physically have to come to Expo to?
No, we would just physically in the system have to have them under the Expo.
Okay, great.
But they could still do it from East or West.
Then why would they quote you a price for three schools?
To put it in those operating systems, probably at the other two schools, is my guess.
Correct.
And it's only used with a limited number of students. It's not, every single student is not engaged in my path. So it's, it's not something we have every student do.
Rhonda?
Yes, I just had a quick question about, you know, that ACT is phasing out Compass and going to Accuplacer. So will this new system be able to support Accuplacer instead of Compass?
Um, to be honest, I'll have to ask Garrick Tekkenberg, he's our rep, for that. I'll have to ask him about that. We didn't discuss that.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm a little concerned about, I had a discussion with my daughter and some other students that have taken online classes, and their concerns were more about the test-taking itself in that if a teacher isn't monitoring what's going on real well, it's easy to tab out of the test, Google the answer, and come back and, and complete that test with the correct answer. So, you know, obviously you want teachers that are monitoring the situation, but I guess I'm asking, is there a technology issue or a, a way that you can lock into that test and not be able to leave that site or log in and not be able to access any other part of your computer until that test is complete?
Yep, we do have CrossTech right now that our teachers use where they can kind of monitor that. But with E2020, they already have something in place where if a student's outside of our district network, they're not going to be able to open the test, which we do run into issues with Plato with kids taking tests from home and our teachers not catching it. That's automatically blocked through E2020. If they're not on our district network, they can't open a test. They all, they're also working on a piece of software that doesn't allow them to open another tab when they're in the browser. That's not done yet, but I know that's something that they're working on.
That's, that's pretty important too. I mean, you, you would think that our, our students are being honest, but, you know, for every one that's honest, there's, there could be one or two that are going to try to confiscate get, get beyond the, the test-taking itself and, and be able to find the answers other ways, so...
And I, I would add too, while they're, they're discussing something, I think they're going to share something, but, you know, I think that's the purpose of having a more rigorous class and a more rigorous assessment because if you think about it like this, if you can quickly open a tab and find an answer, then it probably isn't a great assessment question anyway, because then it's in the, in the category of a recall question. So if you can, if you can Google it and find an answer in 20 seconds. So I think the, the process of the E2020 or the, the product itself is a little deeper, and we try to, we try to strive for performance-based instead of just recall questions. So there probably could be some recall questions, but that's part of the, the, the cycle of going to something a little more rigorous. So I don't know if that's what she was going to say?
Yeah, she's going to say that. I'm also going to have Rachel share the difference between assessments between the two programs too. There's a big difference there.
I just can't keep my mouth shut. So I've been doing the Plato online classes since we started, so seven years or eight. I can't remember anymore. So, and, you know, we did put a lot of work in to make Plato useful, as a useful tool for us. And so I was like, "Corey, this new program better be magic, or I'm not on board," because that was hours and hours and hours of work. And I'm on board. The tests are much more rigorous. They, Plato has, I think they were talking about certain tests. The, the kids can save and exit and go look up a question and then come back and answer. So I think it was more they were going and finding the answers from the program than it was Googling it. But I know E2020, if they click on a question... But I know E2020, if they click on a question and they see it, if they exit out and don't answer that question, it just marks that they've missed it. So they have a lot of safeguards like that, and overall, the questions are so much better. I don't know how many times a day, still, okay, that's what it says, but this is really what they're asking, so, and I found a lot less, they have multiple choice, they have short answer, the kids have to type in, and then I can see if they spell it wrong, okay, you, you got that, you just typed it in wrong, and multiple, multiple choice questions, rather than just A, B, C, D the whole time. It's great. I'm sold.
All right, I just had a question here. The integration in with student management system, price subject to district needs, and I guess my question is, are there any IT things we're going to come up missing on that we're going to buy later on? Something our software's not compatible, computers are not right RAM or whatever?
The only possible thing was the integration, we can integrate E2020 with Infinite Campus, which would mean, any student we enroll on Infinite Campus will automatically be assigned a username and password, E2020. Depending on how we do that, there could be an additional cost. I think the most expensive option is $5,000 for those three years, so, and I believe that option is, every night it, it reloads, and if anybody was at a Infinite Campus, it loads them into an E2020 account.
Any additional computer costs, or anything I kept for the equipment and stuff?
Nope.
And let me just add, in terms of evaluation and assessment, which is very critical and important to me, for a number of reasons. Number one, as a district, we get evaluated based on that, teachers get evaluated, our, our school buildings are evaluated as to how well we test take. And so Dr. Lindeman mentioned, and I'm very proud of our performance-based assessment, and so just for the public, I'd like to give some examples of how we, as a district, evaluate our students, other than just multiple choice tests. For example, group projects, and lab, lab assessments, if they're taking a, a natural science, essays assessing students' understanding of a subject through written description, experiments using scientific concepts, demonstrations, and portfolio assessments, so students can attach artifacts to how they've learned something. So as a district, we have explored and are implementing new and innovative ways to assess how our students are mastering those subjects. So this is a great opportunity technologically, but just know that as a district, we do use various ways to assess our students. That's all.
How many, how many students are, will be using this?
We've had over 1,000 students in the district the last couple of years, it's kind of been the trend, around 1,200 have, have been on there for at least a course, or had an account set up. So not necessarily if they're on full-time online, but maybe they're doing one cut and recovery class, or, or one class outside of the school day, but we've had about 1,200 accounts set up.
And what's the limitation of this contract?
As far as students, we can use it unlimited. We could have every high school student use it if we wish, but it's other, it's called a site license, we purchased that site license, and that allows us as, as many students as we wish to get on at that site.
So do you anticipate a broader, you know, one course here, one course there, for?
It depends on how our programs grow. This is used for not only the PBD, Performance-Based Diploma Academy, but it's also used for our after-hours programming, when we want students to do some recredit recovery, we use it in the summer. We use it for kids who want to accelerate classes, like, it's eighth graders coming in. Last year, we had a good two dozen or more at West High who wanted to take a class as incoming ninth graders, to be able to accelerate the type of, the number of classes or courses that they could take, and get done early, and, and then be able to fit their schedule together the way they want. So we also use it for that, the virtual programming, we use it for that. Who did I miss?
Crossroads.
Yes, we have Crossroads Mall, the mall school uses it. I think that's pretty much it. So we use it in a multiple different areas, so we have a real continuum of services that we are able to use these with.
So it starts at ninth grade?
It starts with ninth grade students entering ninth grade, so they would be eighth graders coming out that summer. We've started that as well.
And we have, we have done a little bit of exploration for some eighth graders who aren't quite ready to, they're, they're struggling in eighth grade, and we've, so we have used it for eighth graders, as they're finishing up their eighth grade year, and, and sometimes it just makes sense for us to do those ninth grade courses, or, or do some front-loading before they actually become ninth graders. So yes, we have used it for eighth grade as well.
We've also used it at middle school for students who have a really difficult time being with other students, or being in a, just the stimulation of a classroom, and so we've used it rarely, but occasionally, we've used it at that level as well, and we've used it with students at middle school to accelerate their learning in the middle school, so.
Do they have a middle school module?
Yeah.
Yes.
They have middle school courses.
I mean, 2020, is it like?
Middle school courses are on the E2020 system.
But that's not part of this contract?
Or is it?
It's, it's not on that contract, they're, that's another thing that Garrick from E2020 kind of said, we're not going to have you purchase a middle school license right now, but you can have middle school students enroll. What we would do is just have them enroll under the Expo High School account on there, but they could still take them at the middle schools. So it's just kind of a way that he eliminated some of the costs that, that we would have to do that stuff.
Very good.
If you would like, this is a list of the courses that, that come with that. I could actually have that added to the Thursday update, or something like that.
Yeah, let's do that. Scan it and email it to us.
And I think E2020 has done a really nice job of, of looking at the courses that are helpful to districts now, especially if it's something that might be considered a specialty course, where not a lot of kids want to take it, but you, that way it, it helps your course offerings, too. And I, and I want to put in a nice plug for Plato. I do want to say that eight years ago, when we were adopting, there weren't as many options, but now, because, because society calls for it, and, and it fits our, our mission very well, when we're talking about global thinking and limitless choices, for, you know, this, the technology really kind of blows it wide open, and so the E2020 really is just a, a little bit better product at this point in time, but Plato was, was certainly did its, did its job.
And how are you doing the teacher PD on this?
Tendably, right now, we have planned as the last PD, June 9th, I believe it is, will be our first day of PD, so we'd have E2020 come in that day. That way, our teachers can be ready to go into the summer and be ready to customize courses, and make sure we get everything ready. And then we tend to have a second PD date that Friday before we come back in August, so our teachers will all get it again then, right before they come back.
And just a, a note of that, if you have subs that go in, you know, so that the subs know how to run that also?
So based on your numbers, 1,000 to 1,200 kids, that's 20 to 25% of the students that would be eligible to take those classes, right?
They're all eligible.
No, but of the eighth through 12th, that's about 20 to 25%. That's a pretty large number, actually, who participate.
Right. Just for your information as well, we're going to run Plato courses through summer school.
Great.
We will not start Edgenuity until August in our new year. That's just for continuity, because we have students who want to complete credits, and they would not be able then to complete a credit. So we'll make it really widely known that when you're in the summer school, you have to complete this before school starts. And generally, we've done that anyway, so that shouldn't be new for students.
So is there a fairly clear transition then? I mean, are, are the courses of Plato identifiable enough in terms of E2020 to know you took the equivalent of this course already?
We know what courses in Plato count for our credits, our credit courses, and we will create that same alignment with E2020. That's easy for us to do. And then, beginning of school, the first day of school, then we start these courses, and we do not do Plato anymore.
So if, if a student was only 50% completed on a course in Plato, that would not map over, they'd start at zero?
That would not map over, and they would not get credit for that. That's why we have some work to do this summer, to make sure our students actually really do complete those courses. But most of the time, we work very hard at getting them to complete those courses and those credits before school starts, anyway. We really like to say, done, and now we're going to start again.
And just one, on those 1,200 students, that includes a student that took one class for credit acceleration, or one class, so it's not like 1,200 students are on this for all their credits?
That's correct.
And one last thing I just want to add, is that the financing for this is coming out of our at-risk budget, I just think it's worth noting that, so, thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work you did on this.
Yeah, Cory, we really appreciate it, thank you. All right, then, all those in favor of approving the online course adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F on page 21, these are board policy changes. These are first readings of policy 408.1 on evaluation, 410.1 on substitute teachers, 506.6 on student fines, fees, and charges, 706.3 on student transportation, 706.4 on student conduct on school transportation, and 706.7 video camera supervision and viewing. And the recommended motion is that, oh, that's right, we're not, this is just for information only. But I do see that Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, is here tonight to talk about these. Thanks.
Thank you. So the first one, 408.1, the proposed evaluation change is just to strike will be, and replace that line with are completed by a trained evaluator signed by the employee, and then the additional line below, the goal of the formal evaluation process is to improve the education program, maintain employees who meet or exceed performance standards, and to ascertain the areas in need of improvement. Any questions or additions? For 10.1, the proposed change for the substitute teacher policy is to add, substitute teachers are expected to take an active interest in classroom activities, the additional line, continue the prescribed program of instruction, and then adding teach effectively, which was there, but striking in each assignment, adhere to the code of professional ethics is the addition to that line. In the fourth paragraph, an individual who holds a current substitute authorization may serve as a substitute in a PK through 12 for no more than five consecutive days, and no more than 10 days in a 30-day period in one job assignment for a regularly assigned teacher who is absent except in the driver's education classroom. And then a change to that next paragraph, an individual who holds a para educator certificate without a bachelor's degree and completes the substitute authorization program is authorized to substitute only in the special education classroom in which the individual para educator is employed. So Dr. Smith and the Human Resources Department wanted to clean up this language to reflect the current protocol. On page 24, moving to the student fines, fees, and charges, proposed change to 506.6, simply removing the line in the second paragraph about wa, the waiving of the fees, and that's in part because of the mobility. Student transportation change for 706.3, the proposal is just to reflect our standard, which is actually, I guess, more lenient, or more flexible for families than the state protocol. We have a one-mile judgment call in terms of being able to qualify for busing versus, you know, a two-mile one that the state calls for. So we're actually fortunate that the board has allowed more families to have transportation provided by our busing contract. And then adding the line, middle school students, sixth through eight, shall be entitled to transportation if they reside more than two miles from the school designated for attendance, which is our current standard for busing. And then below, changing assigned to designated attendance center, which reflects the use of designated in the previous paragraph. And then the following situations, maybe exceptions to the above policy, taking out the first one, and then the mileage guideline in number two will replace legal limit, and then saying elementary students in item four versus children, because we're talking about the younger grade students. And I believe those are the only changes, yes, to that one.
Tara?
Yes.
I just had a question on that, on number four. It says, if the only walking route available is considered hazardous, what is considered hazardous? Because I've had a couple parents talk to me about having to cross major intersections without a light, which they feel is hazardous. So I guess what's our definition of hazardous?
That's a good question, and I would have to ask Kathy Corbett with Durham to give me the specific answer. I do know, having talked with her, when I, too, have had parents contact me, sometimes it's when there's not a sidewalk available, and then there are other circumstances where, like you said, a major thoroughfare that the child would have to cross would come into play, but I know there are a lot of variables, and I don't know the specific criteria, but I can surely check with Kathy and let you know. Yes.
But, but who makes that call?
The district does. Marty, Marty and Kathy work together, and Marty, you know, really works to do that. And, and I would add, too, that it, it can be a permanent, permanent decision, or it can be a temporary decision, much like what we had with Kimball. When Kimball was really under construction, we had a lot of people that we bused temporarily while that construction was happening. So it is, it truly is a district call, but, but Kathy is, you know, advising especially, and, and working with the bus drivers. So sometimes the bus drivers will talk with her, and then she will communicate through Marty. Matt, Cap?
Is there a reg that's a little more specific on that, or?
You know, I don't know, I'm going to have to look that up.
I mean, I just think it would save us to have definite definition of what's hazardous.
Yeah, I can't provide that for you right now, but we can absolutely get that to you, so you know a little bit more about how that protocol is.
You know, it's some work if it doesn't exist, but it seems like, you know, whatever aims, yeah, I actually ought to probably name the streets that, that, that should not be crossed without a light, or whatever their criteria is, so that it's more objective.
I think it's good to have, you know, some good examples, you know, destinations there, but some flexibility, because, you know, there's no way we could ever document every situation where it might warrant a change to?
No, I agree.
And that's why we have that communication with someone here, so you don't have to worry about universe reaction.
No, not universe.
With that discussion, maybe instead of changing it, I mean, instead of ident, sorry, instead of giving a definition of hazardous, explain how, how we will make the decision about what is considered hazardous, that we add in there something about how the communication between Marty, which I don't know his title, and the bus person, put that in the language in here.
Yeah, at least identify.
So that helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
What the parameter.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. On 706.4, page 27, the change to student conduct on school transportation is just reinforcing what we tell families, that the bus riding experience should be an extension of the classroom in terms of behavior and expectation, so the addition of in accordance with our positive behavioral interventions and supports, our PBIS program and policies, is just a good way to reinforce that we are using that same PBIS structure for bus riders.
So the criteria for behavior is the same theory on the buses and the classroom?
When we talk with parents, and I know Cora could speak to this in student services, but when there are issues arising on the buses, we remind parents that there are those same expectations for bus riders as in the classroom. So yes, that's the language that we use to families when we talk with them, and I know the buildings, when they talk to families about bus riding, they want the children to see the bus ride as the same behavior expectation as when they're learning. Obviously with more talking, because you're riding a bus, but having two children who love the bus.
Yep.
Okay, the video camera supervision and viewing policy, which is 706.7, on page 28, the change here, striking Executive Director of Student and At-Risk Services in the second paragraph, and changing it to in accordance with district policy, the building administrator will have the authority to determine those persons with a legitimate purpose to view video data. If additional authority is needed, then that would rise to the level of the Executive Director, and this is born out of giving the buildings more autonomy, so that an individual administrative team could work with families to review busing, video surveillance, or building issues that might arise that we would capture on cameras. And it's a great tool for the administrators to work with families to handle situations that might arise.
Tara, just now that you said that, is that public information to view that video?
No, we get media requests all the time, and unfortunately, in other districts, they must not adhere to those policies, because a lot of that video makes the news. But we don't have any public sharing, nor should we, I think, from a privacy standpoint of protecting the students.
But the, but the building administrator has the authority to request the videos? But the building administrator has the authority to request the videos and show them to specific parents?
My understanding is it would be at the discretion of the administrator in a situation. If a child, if an individual's child were directly involved in a situation, then only he or she might be privy to the video. And this was also because Student Services was being put in a position of having to review multiple videos, you know, a week, and so this just takes some of the pressure off of the office to be able to do it at the building level.
And I can clarify a little bit on that, too. If the student who is being disciplined, we do show the video to those parents, but where we don't is when somebody else is saying, "I want to see the video, my child said this," or, you know, so we're a little careful at... We don't show the video at parent request, but we do show them when there are consequences being applied. And I think we want to be really careful about opening it up and saying, "Anybody who wants to see a video," because, first of all, just from a standpoint of time involved, because, I mean, I also have bus riders, and I think, you know, I could probably watch the footage, you know, because it's interesting to see, you know, see buses. I think we want to be really careful about that. And there is discretion that is used, and yes, we do show them to parents when it is needed.
So, if a student, let's say, something happened to them on the bus, do you show it to that parent, or only the student's parent said?
Sue, it really depends on the situation. It really does. We have before... For instance, there, you know, I'm trying to think of a scenario that, well, a scenario that just happened today, where a student said something happened. We did watch the video, and nothing happened. Matter of fact, it was not accurate at all. We will show that video to the parent, because there was a strong concern about what did happen, and it truly did not. So, you know, I can't... There is not a hard and fast rule, but I believe that, I can assure you that, you know, the video is helpful, but we are cautious about just putting those videos out there for, you know, public viewing, or, you know, for showing them at request. And I think that needs to remain that way, but we do show them.
Yeah, it becomes kind of difficult when you have one student and then who's interacting with another student, so...
Right.
Which parent, or both parents, or...
And that's why, you know, I think that's why we have to involve the administrators in that judgment, and certainly, it is truly a joint effort between the building and the district administration. And so, because when you're watching a video, the videos do not just zone in on one person, they zone in on the entire bus. So, you are showing, you know, so you just, we do have to be careful about that and make it a little bit more private. We have done before where we've shown to a parent just a very small clip, just, you know, of one little three-second incident or something like that. But as far as having parents just come in and view, you know, lengthy amount of time, we do not do that.
So, Tara, I was just reading this and going back to about the, as determined, about the hazardous...
Yes.
Maybe at the end, say, "The only walking route available is considered hazardous by the district," so something that simple, or do you want something a little bit more...
As determined by the district.
As determined by the district.
Okay.
So, maybe something like that would be...
Title's out of it.
Right.
Right.
Right, so that's kind of simple.
And leaves it in our hands.
Correct.
Yeah.
And Tara, I just want to say, I think both Angela and Sue, you're both on policy review, and I really appreciate the fact that we go through our policies as a board and that we do review them, and, you know, it's pretty often, at least once a month, if not every meeting, we have a board policy change or, you know, an adoption. And I just think that's really important, and I just want to bring that up, because we are only as good as those policies that, you know, that we create and that we enforce. And so, I think it's great that we do review them on a regular basis, and that we do have a set policy and program in place to do that, because it is important, because we find things that change, and we got to change with it.
And we remind anybody who's listening or watching, you can always go on our website, and all of our policies can be searched in a search keyword, so it's very easy to determine which policies exist if you have any questions.
Appreciate it.
I also had a question. For 10.1, the substitute teachers, I guess, reading this, I brought up a question about, so are there, is there a difference between a short-term sub and then a long-term sub? And that's the distinction, is what you're showing here, then, is that between short and long?
Actually, the distinction that this policy is showing is the type of certification or authorization an individual has to be able to serve as a sub. So, there's the current teaching license, which can either be in your curricular area or a license called substitute license. Those are individuals who have completed an education teacher prep program. The other, the next authorization is a substitute authorization. Those are individuals who have a BA in some area. They go and take, I can't tell, maybe 12 hours of a course that's offered by an AEA, and they're granted a substitute authorization. Those individuals are only allowed to serve in a capacity of a sub in one assignment for five days. It used to be, what this is reflecting, this change, it used to be that individuals could only serve in, as a sub with a substitute authorization in middle or high school. The BOEE has changed the rule. Now, any individual who holds a substitute authorization can serve pre-K-12, but it's still only for five days. The reason they put in the 10 days and the 30-day period is because districts need subs. And so, to address this rule, they'd say, "Okay, we'll have you sub for five days, then we'll have you off for a day, then we'll have you sub for another five days." So, this is a way of making sure that no one tries to go around the rule for substitute authorized individuals. They can only serve five days in one position in a 30-day period. They can serve every day, they can work every day, but they can't be in one position for more than five days. The last one is a paraeducator certificate, and that's for individuals who may not have a BA, but they're serving as a paraeducator in a special classroom. If they take that training and get that certificate, they can serve as a substitute in their classroom, only in their classroom, because they've built relationships, they know the kids, they know the procedures. So, that's what that allows them to do. So, it's three different types of subs.
So, how many would we have in a typical week doing a substitute authorization? Are those with a substitute authorization that are...
You know, I think it's increasing, because we're really starting to encourage individuals to do that. I would guess, I would guess on any day, we might have, out of 100, we may have 100 people subbing a day, we may have five. We may have five. Something else that's an outgrowth of that, many of the teacher training institutions are providing internship-type courses or programs for teachers. So, those individuals, many of them, because they're having these experiences as a sub, but they don't have teacher background, they're starting to enroll in these alternative programs, so they can actually go back to school and be licensed as a teacher. So, that, I mean, the outgrowth of the substitute authorization is, I think, we are getting some pretty strong teachers out of, in the field. Not necessarily that we're getting, that we're hiring, you know, specifically, but I think, you know, you have individuals who've been in business or have been in, have degrees in other areas that have decided, "Hmm, maybe I'll try teaching." They get their feet wet through a substitute authorization, decide to enroll in a teacher prep program and go back and get their degree, and it's a shorter process.
Thank you.
Anything further for Tara? Thanks, we'll see you in two weeks. Then I can actually put that motion on the table.
Yes.
So, the next item on our agenda is the Edison and Old Orange Elementary Schools asbestos removal. It is item H on page 31, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept the recommendation of Haskell Limited and approve the low bid for the Edison and Orange Elementary Schools asbestos removal with Echo Midwest Incorporated in the amount of $547,000. Can I get that motion on the table?
Somewhat.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion?
This is just such a waste of money. It pains me.
It does pain me that it's that much, but we don't have a choice.
Yeah, I guess not. I'm not sure. I mean, it's such an overrated hazard to begin with, and, you know, in the circumstances we have, demolishing a building. I don't know.
I agree. It's a lot of money, but I don't think we have a lot of choice. And I know I've asked in our facilities meetings, I know we've talked to Marty Metcalf about it, just about how the abatement is, I mean, a lot of times, that's the most expensive piece of our demo, so...
The general policy, all we go low bidder versus local versus out of state?
Yes.
We try to take that, the low bid. There have been a few occasions where there are times when that can be trumped. For example, if the low bid is someone that we've had a poor experience with in the past, we may, you know, we may overlook the low bid, but typically, we do try to do that when we can. And I would say, the majority of the time, it is the low bid that we accept, don't you?
Yeah, I would agree.
I can think of one time when it wasn't the low bid, but...
And I did ask Marty Metcalf, who presented this, I did double-check with him. They did check references on all these. This company does come highly recommended. I can't remember, there were several districts in Iowa that have worked with them. The University of Iowa has worked with them, so they do come very highly recommended, and they were the lowest bid, so I think that's where the...
Quite the difference between the bottom two and the top three, top one, there's...
Almost half.
I know that, when I saw this, though, I know the city of Waterloo is going through issues about bidding local if it's 10% or, you know, within a 10% bid, and in theory, I think that is a very good idea, because you're keeping the money local. But, you know, I don't know if the district's ever looked at that as far as trying to keep things within the community if they're that close. I don't know. Has that ever been looked at?
Let's wait for the city to sort that out, and then decide whether to follow their policy or not.
Right. But, because I'm just saying, you know, I do like to support local if it's reasonable, so...
And it's a little different, whether it's a one-and-done thing, or whether it's a vehicle or something that requires ongoing maintenance. I mean, I think there is a little bit of difference in this, this one-and-done situation in my mind.
This is going to be multiple contracts over the next few years. It's not going to be anything that's going to end, so, you know, the local companies can sharpen their pencils a little bit and get the job next time, so...
Yeah.
I do think there was a little bit of a, maybe to point out to viewers, that there's a little bit of a price break in that we are bidding both of them together. I think if you, if we bid one building and then bid the other building six months apart or a year apart, which we've done in some occasions, you would see a different price, so there is some break on this. We actually had, you know, before we decided to do them together, we actually had budgeted a little bit more than that, because I thought it would be, but it's, you know, a little bit lower than we had anticipated.
Well, and if you look at the, I think, you can see that if you look at the last one we did, which was Logan, I think was three, wasn't it three something?
Three eighty.
Yeah. So, it was three something, so this is, you know, for the two of them, we're getting, I mean, we're not getting two for one, but...
But, and Mike, but your comment just said, "This will be ongoing." What other buildings do we have that requires asbestos removal?
Yeah, some of our existing buildings might have some asbestos to deal with.
But not as a massive level.
No.
Edison and Orange are the last two.
Because I was thinking, you're pretty much new, east or west, maybe.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think, there are a few. Longfellow has some areas, and just don't care.
I guess on the positive, we're getting down to the end of it.
We are, we are.
So, that's a good thing.
Taking care of it.
It's low bid for a reason, that's...
Still smarts, I agree, so... All right, then, all those in favor of approving the Edison and Old Orange asbestos removal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items on tonight's agenda, and that takes us on then to our superintendent's report. Dr. Lindeman?
You bet. I have a kind of a short and sweet update. First of all, I, really quickly, I think that it is interesting, I would urge the board and any viewers to really watch what is happening at the legislature right now in the last moments. Last week, something happened that I definitely was not very happy about, and I know that I have made that known to the legislators. But one thing that we had worked very hard on, and I actually was on the committee to look at the next state test, the Iowa assessment test that would be used for, to complete, fulfill No Tell Left Behind, which is now the Every Student Succeed Act, and this week, the legislature took a step to delay and to start over. And so, there will not be a new test as was legislated. There was supposed to be a new test next year, and that has been delayed, and basically, they're going to kind of start over. And so, you know, I think it's just a really interesting time to watch that. Unfortunately, it was a, it was not a roll call vote, it was a voice vote, so we do not know, there is no record of who voted which way, and so, I'm watching that very carefully, but I know that many of us who had been involved in it, and some of the teachers who field-tested and really found the test extremely valuable, did reach out to legislators before that decision was made, and it didn't, you know, it didn't necessarily make a difference in that. And so, we are watching that, but the state test is one that I truly am disappointed in the decision on that. But on a couple of positive notes, I just, a couple of, I think, celebrations. I wanted to mention, too, that this week, we honored Tony Pappas. We went to West High, and people might have seen it on our social media pages, but he was named as the 2016 Girls' Basketball National Coach of the Year. And I think, you know, I think that is a significant celebration and a significant award, so he was, I mean, a national coach of the year, and I just think that is really significant, so congratulations to him and congratulations to West High. One other point of celebration that was in a board communication, but since Tara's here, I want to bring it up. We had, Waterloo has really, I think, stepped it up as far as promoting our district and doing a really positive outreach, and this last couple of weeks, we were recognized nine different times through our communications efforts. And so, I just, you know, Tara's here, so it's not just because of Tara's here, because certainly, it is your department that is working very hard on this, but under Tara's leadership. And so, I just wanted to note some of the things that actually were award-winning products. Some of our work on the CTE Bond Campaign in helping people know a variety of things. There, you know, there was some overview videos, but there were also some certain pieces on funding and what CTE can bring to us, and those were recognized by the state of Iowa, so I really appreciate that. There was a really great video that was viewed, I don't, Tara can tell us how many times, but on a pair, or in the food service, Connie Albin, if, Aben, I'm sorry, Aben. If you don't know her, she is just quite a trip and just a wonderful addition to West High, and the kids absolutely love her. And that was, Tara, how many times was that viewed? Do you know right offhand how many?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand views on that video, and was recognized across the state, and people, I got a call from a couple of people from Des Moines who had seen that video and just thought it was one of the greatest things. We were recognized for the cultural guidance when the tragedy happened with Mo Sed, a West High student, and we reached out to kind of share a little bit more information. That was recognized. A couple of videos, the Strengthen Diversity video, the Kingsley Leader and Me video was recognized, West High Homecoming was recognized, and I just think that those are really great opportunities for us to kind of show what is going on and just really promote ourselves. So, I, congratulations, Tara, and your department, and I just want to make sure that anybody out in the viewers, maybe it'll drive them to our Facebook page and drive them to our website, but it really is worth watching. And last thing, last week, we had our Department of Education visit, which is a little bit different. They come every five years. In the past, that's always the way it's been, and it's been very compliance-focused. And as the state has become more technologically savvy, they've been able to do some of the compliance stuff on, through technology. But instead, they came and they worked with three groups of individuals from three different buildings, and it was Becker and Lowell and Irving, and they were chosen to just kind of do a really in-depth view of what was going on in their buildings, and it was really definite, it was more guidance-oriented versus compliance. And so, I think the people that were there, matter of fact, I would use the word rave, the teachers, it was teachers and lead teachers and administrators all sitting around and really digging into the data, and when they left, they left us pages of comments about what's going well, what suggestions they have, and then, you know, what's going well at the district level and the building level. the building level, and I have that up in front of me, and I just, you know, a couple of the comments I think are worthy, I'm going to send something out to the all staff, but, so they can see this, but, you know, you have a tremendous foundation in working as a district team. They made special note of our system, systemness, just saying that we're really not looking at one school, we are really looking at the system and making decisions that are good for all kids. They made note of our consensus building. We had an extra opportunity to share with them our district dashboard, which was not on their list to review, and we, I had mentioned it and got so excited, I showed a couple people, and the next morning, we ended up all coming in early so that we could show the Department of Ed. They raved about it and asked a lot of questions, and it actually made its way into our final report, which is not even the area that they were checking in, and they just said, "Your dashboard for monitoring district goals is impressive and is clearly used to monitor implementation and to drive the work." So, you know, Charles, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but it was, it was a great experience.
It was, and, you know, I just want to, again, compliment the three schools and their teams, but what was evident for the state, too, was they were working not just within their teams, but across the schools, and how they came, kept coming back to us and saying, "We have to do this across all 11 elementary schools, because this is really powerful for our students." And I think Dr. Lindeman's initiative and strategic planning, you know, this wasn't just get ready for a state visit two weeks in advance, it was a year of work, Ed Services, our schools, our leaders, and because of that, they learned a lot. I mean, talking with our Department of Education colleagues, they were, they came and they wanted us to be resources for, I think, three different issues, and I think the systemness was a key part of that. So, again, compliments to Dr. Lindeman, her leadership, and our building leadership working together.
So what was the, or what was the potential consequence of the visit?
Actually, because it's different, they do not, past years or in past visits, they've come in, they kind of sweep in, they check, you know, 60 different areas, and then they kind of give you the slap on the wrist for the things that you aren't doing well. That, those kind of compliance things are actually handled outside of the visit. This is actually really an assist to look at what's, what's going on and to provide guidance, to connect us with other districts, and so it really was not compliance, and so when, you know, I can get where you, I get what you're saying, because that really is the way that it has always been. They didn't end it by saying, "Okay, you are, you know, you scored a four on a scale of whatever." It really was, here are things that we could suggest, and we're going to come back and work with you, so it is ongoing, it is not a stop-in and then we'll see you in five years. They actually will be back to work with us and to share more, and they are trying to watch how we implement some of the things that are required by law, so it really was not a sanction-based visit.
If I could add, though, we certainly lessen their level of concern regarding the work we're doing, that, it was clearly evident that the path we are taking as a district is right in line with student achievement and the expectations. So, even though there wasn't necessarily a potential consequence, obviously, engaging them in a successful manner regarding our planning process creates a different kind of dialogue, and creates a partnership versus the state coming in.
So will we become a resource for other districts to look at us?
Yeah, there were three areas, like, like Dr. McNulty mentioned, there were three areas that where they really, really liked what we were doing, and some of the, like, for example, one of them was the work that is happening at pre-K, pre-kindergarten, and the alignment between pre-K and elementary, and they said that they had never seen the work be done like it is, and really, quite honestly, much of that work has just started this year. So, that's one example, and so they were, they were writing down, and they said, "When other districts are having issues with this, you're the, you're the ones who we're going to send them to." They, several of them said, and it's, it's not a competition, although I tend to be competitive. Several, I am, I am, there's no doubt, I'm extremely competitive, and I like to do it, if we're going to do it, do it right. And so, several of them said that out of the 11 visits they had done thus far, that this was the best visit they had ever had as far as looking at how things are being implemented, and the systemness of having, it was not just a dog and pony show where the principal was sharing information, they could ask any person in the room, and the teachers, I got to tell you, the teachers were extremely impressive. And I asked the teachers, I said, "Were there other people back in your building that aren't here today that could talk the same thing?" And they said, "Just about all of us, just about all of us." And so, it was, it was a testimony, and I loved when they said that we were the best. It was, it was a really good visit, and we definitely learned some areas. Teachers, the teams left with, with lots to do, lots to do.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Are you done?
Yes.
Charles, anything, Dr. McNulty, anything? Okay, great. Then we'll move on to information from board members, let's start with you, Rhonda. Okay, thanks. Mike? Excuse me.
I don't have anything to do tonight, thank you.
I'll take care of the peanut gallery over here, just keep on, go ahead, Lyle.
I'll pass as well.
Jesse?
Well, so, what's in our last meeting, joining Sunshine of Georgia, I will add that I did get to visit Lincoln this week on a visit, and very pleasant experience there, principal, staff, both, and was really impressed with the work during the fifth grade, I watched a, kind of a science engineering thing going on in one classroom, and some mathematics going on in the other classroom. Engagement by the students was great, and just watching some of the stuff they're doing with math, you know, not just memorizing, actually watching them do the mechanics of algebra at a very early age, fantastic, so.
Awesome, thanks, Angie?
I do have three things, so I'm going to take their things.
All right.
So, number one, it's Money Smart Week, and it's a great opportunity to make sure that our kids are being financially taught how to handle money properly, it can start really, really early, and one great opportunity that is available is at the YMCA tomorrow at 6 o'clock. There will be different booths where they can kind of talk about different money opportunities as part of Money Smart Week, so, so you want to go to the YMCA at 6:00 PM tomorrow from what, 6:00 to 7:30-ish, they have different booths to help students with financial literacy. The other thing is, these are all related to my job, so I apologize, and the other thing is, on Saturday, there is Fiesta. Normally, it's Fiesta de Mayo, but it's a celebration of Latino heritage, we have so many within our district and in our community that are going to be celebrated during there, so you'll have a lot of opportunities to learn about the Latino culture through music, through dance, through art, so there's also piñata, what, breaking? So that is from, I forgot. It's on, it's in partnership with the Waterloo Center for the Arts, so you can look on their website to find out more information. And then the last thing is that last, last week, Sue and I got an opportunity to do mock interviews with students at Hoover, and I got to do maybe 15 students, and I was so impressed with every single one of them. They were so prepared to answer questions and very open and comfortable with, with me, I don't know, I mean, did they, like, I mean, and they did, they did a really good job, and they were really based on the Leader and Me, Leader and Me question, so those were the questions that we asked them, and a couple of them are preparing to get jobs this summer, so we really talked about what some real job questions might be and how they can address those, so it was really great, and just neat to see that our kids are really, we're preparing our kids at that level even.
Ditto.
Sue, anything else?
No.
Excellent. All right, I just have a couple reminders of some important dates, this Thursday, the Waterloo Community Schools Foundation is hosting their Sparking Excellence Breakfast, it's at the Five Sullivan Brothers, and I know several of us will be there, supporting the foundation. Kevin Geidson's going to speak, and I think it's going to be a great event. Also on Thursday, from 9:15 to 11:30, if anybody's interested in Leader and Me, we have another Leadership Day out at Orange Elementary, and I know they'd love to show off their lighthouse school, you heard them talk about it earlier, so.
Lighthouse cookies.
Lighthouse cookies, right, everything, all good. So, our next meeting will be on May 9th, and for those students who may not remember, we, that was initially a professional development day, but we will actually be going to school that day, so just a reminder about that. And I think that's it, if anybody entertained a motion to adjourn in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye, we're adjourned, thanks, good night.